Good evening.
I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools Board of Education meeting for October 10th, 2017, to order. Would you please call the board?
Mr. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Douglas?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Dr. Davidson, Appulus?
Here.
Mr. Adler?
Here.
Ms. Ross?
Here.
Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. Would you join me in the pleasurable evening? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any announcements?
October is National Principals Month. Throughout October, community leaders, including mayor, artist, and members of the city council, Peoria County Board Member, State Senator Dave Kayla, business leaders, civic organization leaders, and local clergy will be visiting all 27 Peoria Public Schools this month. Congressman Darren LaHood visited Mark Bill's Middle School last week. We look forward to sharing the remarkable things happening in our buildings and appreciating the hard work of our building principals and assistant principals.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Manuel Academy College and Career Fair. Thank you to the 40-plus colleges and universities, fraternities and sororities, military branches, local employers, and not-for-profit organizations, which connected with Manuel Academy students last week at the College and Career Fair. Representatives answered questions for students regarding academic programs, financial aid, scholarship, and career opportunities. Meeting the representatives one-on-one is a great opportunity for our students. Parent-teacher conferences. Parent-teachers conferences will be held on Thursday evening, October 19th, and Friday morning, October 20th. There will be no school on Friday, October 20th. Parents and teachers working together are an unbeatable team. Take the time to visit your child's school, speak to their teachers, and find out how your student is progressing. No matter what your student grade level, parental involvement, and their academic work is a key to success.
Thank you. Mr. Wabber?
Excuse me. Last week, Richwoods High School unveiled its 25-kilowatt small-scale solar photovoltaic array, which was installed this summer. The Clean Energy Project was a team effort between Jeff DeVore, PPS Assistant Director of Building and Grounds for Facility Improvements and Energy Management, Hawk Energy Project Designer, Rural Mechanical Project Installer, and Hawk Atolo Energy, which arranged the financing. The system was provided to Peoria Public Schools at no charge, through provisions of the Future Energy Jobs Bill passed by the Illinois Legislature in December of 2016. The system is projected to offset approximately 53 percent of the energy used at the school at an annual savings of $32,000. The system is valued at $2.5 million. In addition, the district has access to curricula and no-cost professional development opportunities for science teachers relating to sustainable energy. I was there at the presentation. It was very impressive.
Thank you. Other announcements? Mr. Shaw?
Okay, thank you. Congratulations to the Lincoln Cade students for conducting an outstanding food drive. Students spent two weeks collecting canned goods for the first United Methodist Church Food Pantry, bringing in over 1,600 canned goods and non-perishable food items. Ms. Herdlicher, Herdlicher's 7th-grade homeroom brought in the highest amount of donations and, as a result, won the prize of taping Principal Blumer to the gym wall. It was an important lesson in giving back to the community for all Lincoln students.
Which is the only thing to do once you find it, boss.
Thank you. Other announcements?
Reminder to all seniors that FAFSA application open on October 1st and that some grants, including the Illinois MAP grant, is distributed on a first-come, first-served basis. Councilors at Richwoods, Peoria High, and Manuel Academy have been assisting seniors in completing FAFSA applications as well as ICC admissions applications, Peoria Promise applications, and applications for other college and universities. Each high school is holding a meeting for parents on the FAFSA and college application status. Check the Remarkable Times or the school website for more information.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Mr. Adler?
Parent University will be at Five Points in Washington this October. It will be hosted by Lindberg, Mark Bill's, and Rolling Acres Middle Schools and will be hosted again at Five Points in Washington on Thursday, October 26th, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. The evening will highlight family games. Families will have a chance to play various board, card, and video games. There will be snow cones and other special treats for the kids and the kids at heart. The knowledge sessions focus on social-emotional learning, curriculum, SNAACademics, special needs, English language learners, and learning through play as a family, and will continue building on information presented in September. Transportation will be available from the three host schools and three high schools, starting at 4:30 p.m. Go to www.puriapublicschools.org/RSVP to make your reservations, and please remember to bring your booklet to have it stamped.
Thank you, Ms. Adler. Other announcements? Dr. Brown?
I love that guy. A ver que puedo hacer en español. Buenas noches y bienvenidos. Good evening and welcome. Rotary Club de Peoria del Norte and Roosevelt Magnet School han disfrutado una asociación positiva por muchos años. Rotary Club of Peoria North and Roosevelt Magnet School have enjoyed a vibrant partnership for many years. Este viernes, el 12 de octubre, a las 2:50 de la tarde, representantes de Rotary van a presentar a Principal Clark con un cheque por tres mil cincocientos dólares. And I don't know what that is in pesos, but that's a lot. This Thursday, October 12th, at 2:50 p.m., representatives from Rotary will present Principal Clark with a check for $3,500. This donation covers the subscription costs of the weekly Scholastic magazine for each Roosevelt student, a great tool to encourage students to read on their own every day. Muchísimas gracias, Rotary Club of Peoria North, for this generous donation.
Thank you. Other announcements?
Richwoods High School ABSCO students will present an overview of the Peoria Stadium Digital Sign Project to neighborhood association and community members on Thursday, October 12th, 6:00 p.m. at the stadium building concession area. The Digital Sign Project is an education-related and student-led fundraising campaign for stadium improvements. The project is connected to the district's academic function and responds to community feedback indicating that the Peoria Public Schools should try to keep and maintain the stadium. We invite community members to join us Thursday to learn more about the exciting plans our students have developed to raise funds for the upkeep of Peoria Stadium.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Tonight's Community Contribution Award recognizes local artists, Doug and Eileen Lunick. The Lunicks have been involved in several projects, including the mural displayed out front. I don't know if you all were able to see that, but at 5:30 this evening, we all came together to ribbon-cut, so to speak, or unveil in the front of our building. And, you know, for which we are, well, we are holding it. Where is Chris? We've already held the unveiling. Thank you. Here to tell us more about this work with the students and our district at Peoria Public Schools Foundation, Cindy Morris. Ms. Morris?
Dr. Kratt, President Ross, Board of Education, everyone here today. We had a really nice ceremony earlier out front dedicating the mural. I wanted to, once again, thank kind of the movers and shakers. We had Dave Myers and his staff, Building and Grounds did an amazing job. They worked so hard and were very flexible. Chris Copeland just did an outstanding job. But Doug and Eileen are generous in sharing their love of art and their talent with all Central Illinois. In 2012, Doug and Eileen were named Arts Partners of the Year for their work as arts advocates and for devoting their talents to further the arts in Central Illinois. They have worked to install murals throughout Peoria, and we're so lucky that they included the Peoria Public Schools in this exciting project. They also have worked with our students on Comic Life, and that's been something that they were passionate about in bringing that to our teachers and district staff. So tonight, we are very excited about giving them the Community Award, and, you know, the mural is just really, it is spectacular. The color, it's going to bring life to Wisconsin. And, you know, the neat part about it is, too, that the mural brackets, because they are professional artists, and the brackets are just really well-done. So, you know, we will be interchanging the art. Hopefully, this piece will be up for at least a year. But, again, we're very pleased to recognize Doug and Eileen tonight with the Community Partner Award. And here's a picture of the mural for you to take with you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Kratt's gonna...
Would you have to say a few words? And while you're speaking, Dr. Kratt is going to come up and give you a small token of appreciation.
He can actually award.
Cool. Wow. More awards. Oh, I can talk during this. Okay, I'll tell you what. I really want to thank the board for this groundbreaking moment. Not our award, but the award of putting student work in public art. Student work in public art is like a huge thing. In fact, my whole career at Caterpillar, 30 years as a photographer, probably began in the 5th grade when I got a wiffle ball for a drawing than I did. And ever since that moment, I enjoyed and appreciated other people liking what I do. And I carried that throughout my entire life, throughout my entire career at Caterpillar. It drove me to the idea that, hey, I'm pretty good at this stuff now that I've done it so many years. And that passion doesn't die. It starts as a young person, and it continues to grow, especially when it's encouraged. So one of the things that we really are loving, in fact, that's happening here at Peoria Public Schools, is that you are encouraging creativity, and that is essential to 21st-century skills. And if you don't know what those skills are, I like to repeat them over and over again. They are critical thinking, creativity, communication, and collaboration. So thank you very much for what you've done for us and for the students and what you're going to be doing for all of Peoria as we get these things in every school in the city. So thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any of the students here that worked on the project and the instructor, the teacher that was here?
Ms. Jackson, we're going to give them a little award, too.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's next. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So I just would like to say that Doug and Eileen are true partners of Peoria Public Schools. We really appreciate you. You know, you're relentless. You've had this idea for a number of years, and you stuck with the process and worked with Cindy. And Cindy poked me, and it all happened. And she identified a teacher, Jack Clifford, and he'll talk about his kids from Sterling. It's beautiful. It adds light and it shows passion and enlightenment and love. And I love the 21st-century skills that you reference because this is what it's all about. And learning, we actually have a new definition for learning. I see some of our principles there. When we talk about neuroplasticity and productive struggle plus creativity is learning. Cramming is not learning. And, you know, that late night when you're trying to rush, it's the sparks, right? And art does that quite a bit also. So thank you for pushing that work through, and we've only just begun.
Yes, yes.
You've unleashed a monster.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Is your student still Jack?
No.
Okay.
Okay, and we'd like to, in addition, recognize Jack Clifford tonight. He teaches art at Sterling Middle School, 7th, 8th grade. And we had 25 students that he worked with on this mural. And he worked with two students in the Deaf and Hard-Inhearing Program. The students all came up with the ideas on their own and then worked together designing the final mural. Every student had a chance to paint, and some of them stayed after school to be sure the mural was finished on time. And, you know, if you've seen it, it's truly impressive. So we'd like to give you a little gift card tonight. And here's a picture, a framed picture of the piece. And again, thank you so much for your dedication on this project. I don't know if you have a few words, the student left, though, but you want to come on over here?
First, I just think the opportunity from all the people that helped contribute and make this project happen. I'm big about creating experiences for students, giving them exposure to it. Everyone is creative in some way. They just don't know how yet. And so that was a great push. This was another opportunity, something completely outside the box of a typical classroom setting. But it was a great opportunity for them to really push their own imagination, creativity, and even learn more skills in a different avenue within the art field. So thank you.
Talking to you, and you're an amazing teacher. We appreciate that. You're part of Peoria Public Schools family. So thanks. And kudos to Ms. Morris also. Cindy, I mean, this all actually started with her in terms of the building, and it was a little dullish and not really appealing. And she's done not only help with the sprucing of the outside, but actually a lot of great work has happened also inside. We have new carpeting, and Dave, thank you, Dave, for buildings and grounds. And we've only just begun. The faculty kitchen, it looks like it's something from the 1940s, seriously. So at some point, we'll try to collect some money and re-revisalize that. The staff also. So thank you, Ms. Morris, president of the foundation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Most Improved Attendance for August and September 2017.
Thank you, President Ross. This is a time when we actually recognize our build-ins. And so this is called the Attendance Awards, and the Attendance Counts Campaign continues to produce positive results, even in the first six weeks of school, of the school year. And we know that how important attendance is. Increasing attendance is significant because when students are in school, you have a very good chance of increasing student achievement, increasing graduation rates, decreasing occupancy rates, decreasing dropout rates, and obviously, increase in revenue due to increased ADA. So attendance during the first month of school, for us, it's particularly important. For example, students who missed two to four days in September were five times more likely than those who missed fewer than two days to be chronically absent for the year. So even just missing between two to four days, that's really not good. Students who missed four days were over 16 times more likely to be chronically absent than students who were absent fewer than two days. So we can see it's a rippling effect in the negative direction. So every public school is putting a focus on attendance, and I really appreciate our principals, actually, each and every one of them. They're working exceptionally hard. They have a customized plan for their build-ins to recognize students, those who've increased, those with perfect attendance. And amazing things are happening, and the plans are beautiful. The AIOs are the individuals, Academic Instructional Officers are also working with them. And obviously, our friends and volunteers, Tom and Cheryl, are really doing a really nice job and meeting with them and guiding and getting letters if there are any kinks. They work with them. They have someone to problem-solve. They're able to share best practices. It's really amazing. I mean, our Peoria Public Schools Attendance Counts Campaign is such a big deal that the state of Illinois, they're watching it. They've called us. We've been part of webinars to share what we're doing with other districts in the state of Illinois, and I'm serious about it. And I said, Tom and Cheryl, please help with that. So this is true. So this is what we're here for. The first, we have, out of our 27 build-ins, we have three build-ins that have done exceptionally well for this month, the first month. And third place, Rolling Acres, they've increased their attendance rate by 1.49 percent. So I don't have the percentages, Mr. C, but I have the increase. And so I'm not sure from what to what. But that's pretty cool because, actually, for the year, we're asking them to increase their percentage by 2 percent, right? Did we say 2 percent? And so that is really, really tough to do. So some schools are at 93, and the district goal is 95 percent. So if you're at 93, you know, you plug at it, and you plug at it, you recognize kids, and you're developing relationship with students and families. And the ultimate goal, if you're at 93 percent, for example, is to get it to, you know, you add 2 to that, 94 percent. So that's how this works for us. So every build-in, the ultimate goal is to increase by the end of the year, increase wherever they are by 2 percent by the end of the year. So Rolling Acres, so far, 1.49 percent. That's awesome. And second place, Jameson. Yep, and I see Mr. Barber here. Mr. B? Okay, don't come up.
I had to talk myself.
Yeah. I was going to recognize everybody, but let's do it one at a time. So, again, awesome. Tell us, share with the audience and the board the amazing work that you're doing around this initiative to get your kids to school every day.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Kratt, President Ross, board members, and Anitra Davis. It's nice to see you up there as a student board member. We have a great team at Rolling Acres. We have what we call a hero team, which is our here, every-day, ready-on-time team. And so they're really our attendance team that works with kids throughout the year. They meet a couple times a week looking at attendance data, meeting with students. They determine incentives and supports that kids need. So we take kids who have really, really good attendance, but also kids who struggle with attendance just to get their perspective and say, what can we do to support you? What kind of supports can we put in to help you get to school on time and be here every single day? So we're not just taking kids who have perfect attendance or really, really good attendance, but kids who really might struggle with that as well. We have monthly attendance incentives. So we have a trophy that kind of teachers, our hero team, made last year. And so we put some suckers in it. We put some cougar cash in it that gets passed out. out for our kids in that class who have the best attendance for the entire month. And so, last month, Mrs. Gershich's class won it and their class attendance was over 99% for that class for the month. So, I think they're like 99.3% of those kids coming to class. When we present the trophy to that class, the hero team goes in, I go in with them. We talk to the kids about attendance and how important it is. They're excited about it. Mrs. Gershich's class won it again this month, so they'll be getting the rewards as well. And so, in addition to that, in addition to students, we do, I do something for the teachers. And so, actually, Mrs. Gershich took her day today, so she doesn't come to work till 9:00. And so, she gets the first couple of hours off of school. So, she went out to Chick-fil-A and so, she was able to have a couple of hours to herself just to kind of help promote her kids, hey, get to school. And so, the hero team helps cover kids. I covered that class today for a while. So, we played Steel the Bacon in the cafeteria. So, they either get an extra gym class, extra art class, extra computer time, whatever they decide they want to do as a class. We have a student advisory committee. And so, that's made up of kids throughout the school, 5 through 8, that have attendance. And so, they talk about incentives and supports. We're in the beginning stages of doing our check-in, check-out for attendance where we find kids who have struggling attendance, either tardies or absences. And we kind of pair up with a buddy. So, I check in with a kid and kind of fist bump him every day that he gets there and we talk. And so, my student last year's name was Ben. And so, when Ben would come in, kids in the bleachers, because we all meet in the bleachers in the morning, students in the bleachers would kind of come over to me and say, hey, Ben's here, Ben's here. So, they knew that I was his check-in, check-out person for that. We recognize kids who had perfect attendance for the first 10 days of school this year and gave them extra cougar cash. Now, cougar cash is what we use where they can spend the cougar store. And once a week, they can come and just buy small incentives, but just to kind of keep them going. So, we know the best way to support kids and learning is to have them at school. So, those are some of the things that we're doing. We work on those every month again. It's not just me, it's an attendance team, it's the teachers that are making those phone calls and doing a great job, you know, trying to get kids in school to be able to educate them. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bob Barber. They love him also. The kids don't want to miss because they want to see their principal every day. It's all about leadership, right? So, thank you, thank you so much. So, second place, Jamison. And Jamison increased by 2%. So, that is amazing. Ms. Ross, what are you guys doing at Jamison? That's beautiful. So, you've increased 2% compared to last year at this time?
Yes. Thank you, Board of Education and Superintendent Carrat for this award. As you may or may not know, most of our Jamison students don't really have the wherewithal to get up and get themselves ready to come to school. So, it plays a lot of our, on our parents, plays a lot of responsibility on our parents to get our kids to school. Also, a lot of our kids have a lot of medical issues. So, they're just out of school a lot just because they're sick. So, it's really a big accomplishment for our kids to get to school. So, the fact that we've already hit our attendance goal for the year is a big deal. So, thank you for recognizing us. She knows I'm gone.
You're welcome.
Thank you for this award. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. And Dr. Coleman, can you please come up to the podium? This is amazing. First place, Peoria High. And, hey Doc, this is 4.74%. 4.74%. Unbelievable. What's happening at Peoria High regarding attendance? So, this is increased by almost 5% compared to the same time last year. That's amazing.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Carrat, President Ross, and the rest of the board members. One of the things that we did this year was we've taken Because We Care as more than just a, you know, a campaign. We really are showing that we care. We're visiting parents, we're visiting homes more, more than they expected us to. We've done some home visit with teachers after the school year started. Because We Care was something we did before school started. Dr. Carrat went on some of the visits with us. And we decided, we missed a lot of families, so we decided that we would continue this. And so, we went to a lot, we've been going to a lot of homes even after school has started and say, oh, we haven't seen you a couple of days and we've developed our check and connect already. We do what we call HOT and that's here on time. And everybody that's HOT gets a bag of hot chips. Not exactly what I want, but that's what the kids want. I'm trying to get, push them for some hot wings or something like that, something else hot. But we're also doing the HOT incentive, so they get a bag of hot chips every time they're here on time, those students that we have contracts with. So, those things have helped this year. It's not just, it's our whole team, it's everybody in our building that has stepped up. And we knew that we didn't do so well last year as far as attendance is concerned. So, our whole building has taken on the responsibility of, we have to increase the attendance at Peoria High. And it's impressive for us because we are the largest school in the district, so we have about 1,400 kids. So, to get them there every day is a big feat. And if you've ever been to Peoria High, you can see that we have a lot of kids. And so, trying to get all of them there every day is, is a big deal. So, it's a lot of work, but we are dedicated to doing it this year.
Yes, you are. You're doing a great job. Thank you so much. Amazing. Let's keep it up. I'm rooting for you guys. The goal is 90% or higher and if that happens, I will also provide an incentive for Peoria High.
Make it HOT.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
All right, I'll help you out. Oh, and Ms., Dr. Coleman, you do receive, thank you, Ms. Ross, a banner to brag. You have bragging rights for this money.
And it's most improved attendance for August and September.
Next on our, on our agenda is district presentations, if we want to get ready for that. Ms. Gershness, come on down.
What's the prize? Good evening. Thank you, Mrs. Ross, board members, and Dr. Carrat, wherever she is. I'm pleased to announce that the district is responding to more opportunities for students by extending learning through a program we're calling Saturday University. We learned about this program initially from Representative Jahan Gordon Booth and then we went to visit Senator Lightford in Northern Illinois to learn a little bit about what they're doing with their Saturday University. They have 30 students, we're shooting for 50 for 3rd and 50 for 6th grade. So, let me tell you what we're doing. For our 3rd grade is they're going to focus on reading and math, skill development. And every student's going to have an individualized learning path. They will get some small group support as well as online support on the Saturdays that they come. And we're going to have speakers come periodically as well to talk to the students about career paths. So, they can, so we can keep that visioning forward for our students. Our 6th graders are going to focus on math. Our ultimate goal is to get them to that Algebra I credit or recognition by the end of 8th grade, so they can take the higher level math courses when they get into high school. So, this year, 3rd and 6th grade, next year, 3rd, 4th, 6th, and 7th, and then the year after that, 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th. So, we're excited to grow the program over the next couple of years. We actually have some volunteers coming from Caterpillar, some engineers that are super excited to help with us. And we have a field trip that we're working on already with the Riverfront Museum with a program they have that's called Dream Big. It's coming to the museum. So, that goes right along with our theme for Saturday University this year. So, it's open enrollment for students. We have an online link that Mr. Copeland has already sent out and he'll keep sending it out. And students can join as the year goes on, so there's no real end date for registration.
Questions, Mr. Shaw?
Give me the, thank you, by the way. Can you give me the grade progressions again for years 2 and 3?
Sure. It'll be 3rd and 4th, and then 6th and 7th. The idea is even if the same, same group of students stick with the program, they can roll up with the program.
Is it on a referral basis or is it?
Both. I mean, schools might say to a student and their parent, it might be good for you to go to Saturday University, but it's open enrollment. So, we have students of all abilities coming as well.
Any other questions of Ms. Gershness? Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is Mr. Willis, an overview of additional parking plan for Franklin.
We have a. Lights, camera, action. Rob Colton from our. And Dave Meyer will give an overview. And then, I'd like to say thank you to several people who participated in the process.
Good evening, everyone. I'm on, thank you. Thank you, Mick. No, it's my pleasure to be here. I may be still a little mixed under at the beginning and say this, it's really a great representation of collaboration amongst the school and the community and the city who's here in attendance as well, that what we started with and where we're at represents a little bit of everybody giving and everybody winning. So, this is a great presentation, a fun one to give. See, there we are. All right, we'll start with the plan here. Get the pointer to work. See here. See the pointer up there? Got it? I can't find it, sorry. Can you give my pointer? I can't. All right, thank you. You ever get your bearings where Columbia Terrace is at? I'll just walk you around down Bestore, Armstrong, and Douglas. As you go down, and then I'll come back to the new park, the new parking lot area, if you will. If you come down Bestore, you'll notice that we got a, it's a one-way street, it's currently two-way. The plan is now to convert it to a one-way street. We're going to have parking on the residential side. Nope, no parking on the school side, but we're going to stripe that out so people don't get the impression that you can park on both sides. If they do, it's going to restrict the lane width, it's going to be hard for people to get through. Real quickly, we put on the residential side for a couple of reasons. One, residents park along there today, so they'll still have the opportunity to park there. Secondly, we are concerned if you parked on the other side, backing out of driveway be prone for somebody getting hit, so on and so forth. You go around along to Armstrong and you'll notice there's a big striped triangle there, that's a big piece of pavement there now. My guess is as this goes through, the city may come up with some ideas of what better to do with that space to soften it up a little bit, if you will. But on this side, along this street, we've put parking on the school side, both for school or residents to use. This street also goes from one-way to two-way. We're optimistic that this may help with some of the traffic speeds that go along through there as well by converting this to one, two-way to one-way? Yeah, I'm sorry. Did I say it backwards? My bad. It's two-way, we're going to one-way. Thank you, Mick. So, we're hoping this will help with calming traffic down through there. And as we go up Douglas, same thing as at Bestore really. We've, we've put parking on the resident side, so they can still park. It doesn't mean people attending the school couldn't park there from time to time as well, probably more guests. And we, if you also notice, we've got a bus lane there where the buses can load and unload, which works well with where you can see they're going to line up, I believe on the parking lot to, you know, line up to exit the school at the end of the day. We've also striped that side off as well to provide ample room for buses and emergency vehicles if something should occur as the buses are parked there. As you come back along to Columbia Terrace, I, if I didn't say Douglas also goes to a one-way street as well, if I didn't say such. Come back to Columbia Terrace really remains as is with, as a two-way street. But we do have a parent drop-off lane there that is going to move inward towards the school. Sidewalk's going to shift back. You're fine. And, and then as, as we, as the morning queues up or the afternoon's queue up, there is room where parents could continue to pull around and drop off their student or pick their student up, well, would be given the time of day. And, and nothing in this plan prohibits a student, if they were driving down Armstrong and dropping their student off, they still could do so. I mean, there's areas there that you could stop real quickly, the student, hopefully then the passenger seat gets out, goes in, doesn't have to cross traffic, gets to the sidewalk safely and moves into the school. So, nothing here prohibits those habits from, from occurring. We're going to strongly encourage them to use the parent drop-off lane, but you know, there's nothing here that's forcing them. I'll come over to the new parking lot area. At one time, this was a lot larger. It was not as much green space in the end. We'll now have, I think it's 19 spaces, I think, there. Talking to Dr. Bond, it's going to be more of a general parking type usage. So, anyone that wants to come can use it. We're saving a couple of nice stately trees and then going to enhance the landscaping as well, as you can see there, with some supplemental landscaping, hedge rows to block the parking, everything like that. Go into the, yeah, go into the Franklin lot. And really, that lot there almost, I think, has enough parking, I think maybe one space more or less than the full-time staff there now. So, everyone that works there should be able to park within Franklin School. You'll notice the one area is a one-way direction. So, you come in, you back out, have to leave and exit arm to Armstrong. There will be a gate there. School operate that how they best see fit. The gate can be open all day, closed, whatever. But I think in the end, oh, and then the, the plan for the playground equipment, as you know, the area's maybe getting a little bit smaller if you were to drive out there and look and think, boy, that doesn't look like what I saw. It is getting smaller, but I know Mick and Dave are planning on enhancing the playground equipment there as well and that functionality. So, in the end, I think this is a win-win for everybody. It's going to provide ample parking for the school, ample, hopefully much better parking when there's events going on there. And if you're visiting the school, you know, that general parking area, it will probably be open and be a nice place to park and, you know, cross the street and get easy access into, to the school. I know pending board approval tonight, that'll satisfy the zoning issue. And then, the city's got some procedural action they need to take. I think the Traffic Commission needs to review it and Council needs to approve it. And then, after that, we'll be moving forward with the design and probably, you know, bidding this winter, construction next spring slash summer.
And there were a number of people, Shannon, Bill, everybody who, we've been meeting and talking kind of as an informal group since probably May. Would you guys all, Mike and all you guys, would you all stand? I just want to thank these guys. They, they put in a lot of time. They gave up a lot of time to sit with us, talk with us, and really just work through what best could work for Franklin School. And I think at the end of the day, we came up with a solution that really, all of us believe addresses far better than our initial plans, additional parking, relieving some congestion, and to the extent that we could preserve green space, we, we did that as well. And so, I wanted to publicly thank you guys for all you did to help us.
Are there any questions? Oh, there's more?
No, that's, we said all that stuff.
You have something, sir?
Can I just make one quick comment? My name's Tim Mullen and I just wanted to thank Dr. Carrat and President Ross and the board for Mick Willis. This is a man who is genuinely and sincerely interested in listening to people. And when he said the finished product that he calls a compromise is better than what happened originally, there were a lot of people that worked on this, but he deserves the, the kudos on this. He was awesome, so.
Thank you. My mother would say my head can't.
Mr. Wadler.
I just wanted to say I'm going to strongly endorse that we adopt this. There were several months ago, I got a phone call from a lady named Ann who just happened to go to college with me. And she said, we had this issue and I just wondered if you could help us out with it. See, my card up the sleeve was Mick and Dave and my Building and Grounds people. And then, they brought in people from the city. And the gentleman who complimented us about the art, two of the things that he talked about was creativity and collaboration. And I think you're seeing both of those work here. We could have taken the position, and they knew that at the very beginning, nope, we need the asphalt, we're just going to cut the tree down. Well, here we had neighbors who were very interested in making that neighborhood attractive and keeping some things there. And I talked to Mick, I said, we just need to talk to these people. And he took it from there. Building and Grounds got some people involved and they made it work. None of this works unless every piece of this works. If the city would have stopped on this, this, it wouldn't have worked either. So, I mean, it was really collaboration at its best. And so, we ended up getting the parking spaces we needed. We got drop-off places that we needed for Franklin, but we got some really additional green space. I don't know if any of you have been by there, but there are two beautiful trees, one huge oak tree that we were able to save. And we were able to because I think of the creativity of Building and Grounds and these people, we've got some additional green area going in, going in there. So, I think it's going to be, I really hope the neighborhood feels, but I think it's a win-win for the neighborhood and for the schools. And it just shows, you know, if we listen, damn things can work. And so, I want to thank Mick again, but everybody else who participated in it, because I think everybody gave a little bit to make this thing work. And I just want to say. And I just want to say to the board, I just strongly recommend endorsing this. Thanks again, everyone.
President Ross, I am glad this is coming to fruition. I was concerned about the trees, too. I'm a big hugger of trees, so I was really glad we were able to save the trees. The other thing is the playground. I also think our kids need to get some energy out by the middle of the day and have a good place to do it. And so the playground is a real plus for me. That was my fun time at, once we came out for lunch to play in the playground. So I'm glad our kids are able to do that. Aside from all of that, and I don't mean to make Mick not be able to walk through the door, but when I said last week, "We got the right people in the right places," I truly meant that. One of those is Mick. And Mick, I appreciate you and I appreciate how you listen and can compromise and get things done. Thank you.
Anything else? I do have one question. Initially, when we first started this, we were talking about expanding or making more playground area. Did I hear you say it's less playground area now? Go ahead.
Even though the space, footprint of the current playground, where the new playground was going to be installed, we were actually going to keep, there's actually two playgrounds there. One is more dated than the other. The one in the back was the remain. We actually painted it to make it look better, but the front one was to be pulled out for the new one. This way, even though this appears to shrink the playground, but the footprint for the new playground equipment will actually increase. So we'll utilize the space and be able to wrap it around. See, the other two were almost in front of each other, which would make supervision hard. This way, we will take the new playground and wrap it, so you'll have full supervision from the teachers to all the kids.
Because I know they have a problem with parking and playground kind of...
Right. Yeah. We're laying the playground equipment out differently really helps us maximize the space that's left. So I think in terms of the way it'll function, it'll actually function like it's bigger.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, may I have approval of the minutes from September 11, 2017 and September 25, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. We have now come to the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for members of the community who wish to address the board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation and maintenance of a quality education for the students of Peoria Public Schools. The board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that all have their First Amendment rights of free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will have a staff person help you. In addition, board members are accessible outside of these meetings. Their phone numbers are listed and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. We realize that five minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts, so we have installed a comment box over by the door. And our secretary will be collecting those comments after each board meeting and compiling and sharing those with the superintendent and the school board. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has five minutes. No one under age 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian or teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Our first speaker is Mr. Charlie Thomas.
Good evening. I've been gone for a while from this role, so I'm trying to get back in the swing. I taught in this district for 35 years, loved every second of it, was a teacher, a coach, did a lot of different things. The new role I'm going to do, I'm in retirement and my wife wants me to do something, so I'm going to... Still have a lot of teacher friends and some, by the way, Mr. Barb, oh, he's gone. What a great principal. Still have a lot of teacher friends and principals that are friends, and they send me stuff. I'm not afraid to come and talk about things. Hopefully, it will always be bad stuff. Sometimes it'll be good stuff. Couple things, no one has to answer now because I know it's not appropriate, but I heard something about five points. We were taking our kids to five points for something. That's in Washington, Illinois. That's where I went to high school. It seems like we should be able to do that somewhere in our own city. Maybe it's something I'm not aware of. I will grant you that. The Saturday University, a lot of teachers wanted me to ask, "Who's teaching that? How are you going about picking who's going to be teaching those subjects?" Because there's a lot of great people in this district that can do that. I've not seen it in print, maybe it is. Once again, I've been out of town for a few days. The PDs, a lot of teachers confused about the first PD, the half-day. I don't think there was anything for them. I don't know who's in charge of PDs. I used to hate PDs, I'll be honest. I was PE driver Zed, and there was nothing ever for me. But most of these young teachers, and we have a lot of them now, they want to grow. And we need professional development, appropriate professional development. And also, we have a lot of good people right in our district that can perform that professional development. We don't have to always go out and try to get these big-time guys and $10,000, $15,000 a pop when we have great talent right in this city. I was a big union guy when I was a teacher. I was part of the union, very much a union guy. But I'm seeing more and more complaints about teachers that just aren't doing their job properly. And I will never bad-mouth a teacher unless it's something that's detriment to the students. And I have seen this firsthand. I have subbed a lot and I visit a lot of the schools. I don't see many, there's no... I think it was a union meeting tonight, that's probably why Jeff's not here. But I don't know what we can do about that. There's bad administrators, there's bad everything, we all know that. But it scares me a little bit. I mean, some teacher's not in it for the right thing sometimes. The Elite program, I'm real confused about that. I just met one of my ex-students is going to become part of Elite, and what a great kid. I just love him to death, Mr. Warfield. So I'm torn about Elite. I'm never quite sure if we really needed Elite. I'm still not sure, I'll be honest. I know I've seen him do some good things, I've seen some bad things. We now have this thing of SEL. I see Mr. Booth's not here tonight. Not quite sure about that either. Now, I'm very old-school, but it seems like SEL and Elite kind of work in different directions. And I could be wrong, I'm no expert. Believe me, I'm no expert. But I've seen Elite in action. I see what they do. Very forceful, very in-your-face type of thing. I've also talked to several teachers at Lincoln. And, you know, if kids get expelled, you know, they go to the expelled school, which is now a true win. Kids are getting expelled from Lincoln, too. And I know Elite's there. Kids are getting expelled from a lot of different schools, but I'm not sure what Elite's doing that's making that big of a difference. And that has nothing to do with the individuals, I'm sure they're great people. I'm just going by what teachers tell me. And that's why I'm here, is I'm not afraid to say the things. Do I know if it's going to work down the road? I think Sterling, I know Sterling's got a great principal. She is a friend, and I, you know, that taint said a little, but I know she tries to go in there and do the right job. Not getting a lot of cooperation from teachers there right now. Elite going there is going to make the difference? I don't think so. I think the teachers have got to make the difference there. The principal and those teachers can make the difference there. I've seen it. Teachers have been doing SEL and Elite's jobs for years. Now we're just calling it something different. And teachers should be doing, they should be held responsible to do SEL and Elite's job. Now, Elite's got some great people in that program. I wish they'd go to school, get their education if they don't have a teaching degree and become teachers. Some of them would be great teachers. I've seen them talk to kids, they talk them down very quickly from the escalation. I think they could do great, but the pay... Nah, it's still five minutes, is that what it is? We'll do 10. Thank you.
Isaac Eggersen? Did I say that correctly?
How are you? I had a lot more written than five minutes, so I'll try to summarize everything. For the longest time, for the last two years, my kids have been at Whittier. And my daughter absolutely loves the school, the teachers. I've never, never had a problem with them. This year, the new principal, it's gotten out of hand, to be honest. I have gone to her about my son. He's a whirlwind. He is a Tasmanian devil, to be exact. And I'll be the first to tell anybody that. I actually warned him before his first day of kindergarten. His teacher, Ms. Davidson, is an amazing teacher, but she doesn't have the help, not for kids with the IEPs than my son. But what I want to get to is anytime I've had to deal with Dangman, I think her name is, Julie, I have been patronized, I have been talked down to. I've actually had one point where I actually felt like I was 10 years old and I belonged back in that school. I have followed all the protocol. I have gone to the principal about herself. I have contacted Dr. Wilson. I have contacted Dr. Karat. And the problem consists, it's still happening. Actually, last Wednesday, with a meeting with Ms. Wilson, we're still trying to figure out a behavioral pattern for my son. The principal explains that we cannot do good for my son in Whittier because me and her cannot get on the same page, because it's not a united front. She has already given up on my son. The main thing I want to get to is I have talked about relocating my kids to a different school. Unfortunately, I'm not the only one who has a say in this. So I have moved my whole family to get closer to Franklin School. But I don't have a say in that. With that being said, they knew, apparently my daughter had told her teacher and it got through the school that after Wednesday, my kids were supposed to be transferring to Franklin School. It's just a coincidence that apparently all this has started eight, I mean, from the beginning of the year. And there was a mix-up with phone numbers, apparently. She couldn't contact me. She had contacted my son's mother for a month or so. But we're talking about numerous, numerous behavioral issues that my son has at school. I'll never deny that. His first actual suspension was on 9/26. And when I went in and got my son, because there's numerous times we get called, we have to go in, get my son and, you know, calm him down in the buddy room or whatever they call it. And numerous times, we have tried. Okay, he's calm, he'll be good for the rest of the day, you know, he knows his place. And then we're explained that he has to be out for the rest of the day, but he's always welcome to come back next day. 9/26 is his actual first next-day suspension. It was only half a day, but when I picked him up, it was the same as every other time. No suspension, he just has to leave for the half a day. And I did, I contacted Dr. Wilson and explained that to her, and she said, "No, you know, he's more than welcome to be in school, but there's no suspension." Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a staff person that can... Okay, is there any response to audience presentations? Okay. Seeing none. Information items. Proposed expenditures over $2,500. Any questions of Mr. Willis? Okay, let's be doing good. Report of requests under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such request.
Thank you, President Ross. Since our last board meeting, which was held on September 25, we received three requests. And out of that, one was filled. There were also two pending requests noted on the 25th of October, and all of those were filled. To date, we have received 51 requests for this calendar year at a cost of $2,699.50.
Thank you. Information items. Consent agenda?
Thank you. We have 10 items on the consent agenda for this evening. Item number one is the gifts to the school district as amended. This meeting, we have $18,000 and year-to-date, $29,452. Item number two is the payment of bills. Item number three is the payment for travel. Item four is the human resources report. Item five is the approval of the independent contractor agreement for a grant writer. Item number six is field trip approval for Richwoods High School JR OTC program to Indianapolis, Indiana. Item number seven is a field trip approval for the Peoria High School boys and girls basketball teams, also to Indianapolis, Indiana. Item number eight is recognition of National Principals Month. Item number nine is the approval of the Elite contract addendum for behavioral school culture services at Sterling. And item number 10 is approval for the plan for additional parking at Franklin School. And that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. Are there any items any board member would like pulled for a separate vote? Dr. Bob?
Number four. And number nine.
Mr. Walther?
Number five.
Any others? Okay, may I have a motion and a second for all items except four, five and nine?
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Walther?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Item number four?
I do not support the human resources report.
Dr. Bob, do you want to make a motion and then...
Oh, I beg your pardon, I move...
Make a motion for number four.
I move motion for number four.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, I can support that.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, it's been moved in second.
Mr. Walther?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
No.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Item number five?
I move that we adopt item five, the approval of the independent contractor agreement for a grant writer.
Aye.
Second? Discussion?
Yeah, I am, actually, in favor of this item, I just had some questions.
And then question number two was?
Well, she had some, I think, some percentages of grants.
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right, 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 right. And we actually had a conversation with her about that. Dr. Ike, why don't you take that one? We've had several conversations. We actually, that's a great question, Mr. Walther, we talked about that with her today. We are pretty flexible, the expectations are very high, and she's, she's highly motivated, but we don't want to scare her off also.
That was a question I had, if she's going to do the numbers that you were talking about, she's awful damn good.
Right, right.
Thirty-five grand for it for that.
I know, I know. So we've kind of, we said, will there be flexibility on that case?
The breadth of her, or the scope of the grant she's going to work in, it's not just academic. The reason I'm saying that is also on the building committee, there are other things we would like any of these grants to look at.
Absolutely. We found her through APSCO, and she's assisted them in securing some grants. And so she has that flexibility, she has a background in accounting, was a former IBM professional individual, and then the office closed, and so she's sort of really readily available to assist us. There's actually a grant that I saw that came out from the city, having to do with more career readiness. We had a conversation with her about that. So she's, she's wide open. And Susan's office, my office, Mr. Welch, all of the AIOs will sort of converge and, on her, and work with her and support her. But I am optimistic, and she's very excited about the opportunity to provide support for peer public schools. And that's actually a really good deal that we're getting.
Oh, I think it's a bargain. I thought we were afraid we were going to have to actually hire full-time staff to do this, but if she can, if she can do this, you know, at this rate, I think it's an excellent idea.
Yeah, and it could come up, probably turn out to something bigger for her, but you were right in terms of the targets. Dr. Ike and I had a lot of conversations about that. You want to add anything to that, Dr. Ikkijacker?
No, you didn't. I mean, today, we talked with her, and we said, we'll monitor at least through the first, to the end of this school year of this, and then to the end of this semester, and get a sense for how, how realistic that is. She did her due diligence with herself and her lawyer, and came back. But we were basing our target, based on the leads we'd be getting, we'd be getting a ton of leads, local, state, business, civic. So we thought, based on those leads, that those will be, they're done, but it is only efficient.
Yeah, and it's a new venture for us, so we're, we talked about collaboration, we definitely don't want to set her up for failure, that's not, yeah.
That was a concern I had, because it was a pretty high target that she was going for.
Yep, thank you.
Could I reach out? Comments on this issue? Okay, so, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Walther?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carry.
Item number nine?
I move that we approve the Elite Contract Addendum for Behavior and School Culture Services at Sterling.
Second.
Comment, discussion, questions?
Thank you, President Ross. Last board meeting, there was a somewhat exuberant response to Mr. Walther's quiet and reasonable query regarding discipline. Not put too fine a point on it. The consensus seemed to be that the district was in much better shape, discipline-wise, than what Mr. Walther's comments suggested. The response was stronger than perhaps was intended. Nevertheless, it is possible that Mr. Walther hit upon a truth worth commenting on. This begs the question, if discipline, or behavior, is improving, why do we need to deploy Elite at Sterling? Point of fact, Mr. Thomas preempted many of my thoughts with his comments. Second, and just as important, I have asked, or I asked for evidence of Elite's effects when I first arrived on the board, received none. I have made a request for outcome-based evidence several times since, Elite has chosen not to respond, I've heard only anecdotes, which leads me to believe that any academic and/or behavioral effects, anecdotal or otherwise, in our schools are likely due to the well-documented efforts of Family Core and Children's Home. In point of fact, there's an additional source that might affect the outcomes of any improvements we see, and those were eloquently presented by Principals Barber, Ross, and Coleman. Now, likely, there will be an energetic rebuttal from my colleagues, I expect that. I would only wish to observe that we have no quantitative or other evidence regarding Elite's effectiveness, despite repeated attempts to ask. We do have evidence, however, of academic, demonstrable evidence of academic improvement as a result of something else, concerted collaborative efforts of teachers, AIOs, administrators, and families. And once again, I direct your attention to the intendant's reports given by Principals. In the absence of any evidence as to the effectiveness, I don't understand why it is that we continue to spend money on it. And therefore, I believe it is an unwise expenditure of our resources and time and efforts to continue to support this program.
Any other comments? Mr. Walther?
I have some questions, too. I think Mr. Thomas had hit on some, but in speaking to this, I guess my concern is, and I share with Dr. Bob on this, is the definition, the reason we're hiring Elite is to design to create and maintain a positive school culture that is designed to increase student achievement through behavior supports. I think the honesty is, Elite is here as behavior support and to assist discipline. I share with Dr. Bob, I've asked also for these. We have not received any information or data saying that Elite being in a school does, in fact, improve. And it was my concern when I brought up discipline last week, was that I think there's a strong connection between being, having discipline in the school. If we're hiring Elite just to be an adjunct arm of discipline for the school district, then I think we should hire them for that. But I think if we're going to hire them to improve academic performance, then I think they should have some evidence that they do do that. And I don't think we've seen any of that, and I don't think that's too much to ask. This is an additional expenditure that we're, that we're putting out. This is, I understand, the third school Elite's going to be in this year. And, you know, having said that, I'm going to agree with Mr. Davidson of Aviles, I says, I would just like to see some academic background to do this. Because we came up, and now we're into October, and we've added another one. I mean, if there's another problem at another school that we can't, as teachers and administrators, handle on our own, are we going to add, extend another contract? I mean, I guess, it's a concern I have as to, as to where we're going with it. It's not a reflection on Elite. I've been a strong supporter of Elite since I've been on the board, but I think there's some valid questions here, and I think everybody, everybody here should be able to go through that kind of scrutiny. What's the effectiveness of the program? What are they doing? And where does it work, and where does it not work? So those are my comments.
Any other comments? Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walther?
No.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carry.
Item 12, expulsion with expulsion to be held in advance. I move that the expulsion with expulsion held in advance listed on the report dated October 11, October 10, 2017, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Walther?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carry.
Thank you. Presentations and suggestions by board members. I have. It's actually from Dr. Karat. We wanted to give, we do talk a little bit about, just briefly, about Dr. Lyman and what she's doing with the brain, brain enhancement.
You know what, thank you. Dr. Ike had an opportunity to say some remarks, and a couple of others, I'm going to ask Dr. Wilson, well, really, I'm sorry to put you in the spot, this is amazing work. You know, talk about, talk about the whole child, right? And educating the whole child, and using all the resources that we possibly can. We cannot do it alone. We need all the support that we get. I hear, you know, you need to clean this up, and clean that up, and clean this up. I can't do it alone. My AIOs can't do it alone. We need, we need, we need Elite, and we need more, and more, and more, and more, and more, and more, of those types of support.
And why? Because we have a different, a different child.
Yeah, and, 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 I mean, I, I, you just heard a dad, right? I mean, and how he characterized his son. I mean, like, did you, did we hear that? And, and so we're educating, and so we're trying to, to, to educate ourselves, educate our staff, and be supportive. And for me, the number one thing is having a culture and climate that's conducive to learning. And safety, and I love when kids are able to come into buildings, and they're happy, they're excited, and, and when anything gets in the way, we have to do by any means necessary, almost, what needs to be done to make sure that our kids are safe, or our teachers are safe, and, and they're learning. And so this piece helps us with the, the social-emotional side, and we have two amazing researchers who are coming in, Dr. Lyman and another doctor, and Dr. Lyman wrote this book for Principals, and it's about neuroplasticity and, and, and learning, and we were able to have discussions. That's, it was beautiful. I observed your professional development, the three of you, you, Mr. Welch, Dr. Bell, and I, I think it's worth, the board needs to hear what we experienced, what the Principals experienced, and how that's transforming our definition of learning, and the impact of trauma and, and, and those experiences on the kids. Folks don't understand what we have to deal with, those people who are in the trenches, and, and it's, it's, it's more than a force to be reckoned with. This is, this is, this is work. This is crazy work, you know? And, and, and so, Dr. Wilson, what happened at your, your meeting with the Principals?
Right, so what we're, we're, we have sessions each month with the Principals, and we're learning and reading about the neuroscience. There's so much brain research on the learning that students do, but this is really picking up on the social-emotional piece as well. Students are.
Excuse me, Dr. Wilson, would you go to the mic, please?
I know, I do.
But it kind of picks up on our, our recording and that. Okay, thank you.
She doesn't want me to prepare, so you're getting us to school. But really, what this is about is, there's so much brain research about how students are learning. Really, this is looking at the behavior piece of it as well. And what's interesting is this whole concept that Dr. Karat has talked about with this neuroplasticity. And it's about, no matter where students are in their life, and even as adults, and I'm really excited about this idea, is our brain is constantly changing and growing, and we have an opportunity to impact our students, not just in the way they learn, but also the way they behave. And so we are, we are learning the research behind it, so the what? What is the research say about why students are behaving the way they are? And then what can we do about it? What kinds of interventions? And how can we react differently so that we can help students? So as part of this, we are going to learn, so we're going to read chapters in the book. We're also going to have a mini-session where they're going to give us new research so that we can continually feed our bucket and keep learning ourselves. And then we're actually going to talk about case studies. So the Principals are going to bring case studies that are happening in their schools that we, challenges, and so that we can learn what happened, and what can we do to react differently, and why is the student behaving this way? And really, what's going on inside their brain that's triggering some of the responses? So it's fascinating work, and I think sometimes we can handle it better if we understand the why behind it. And this is really giving us that why, and so then we can do better to support the students. So it's really, it's action research, it's our own research that we're learning about, and also, we're having conversations as well. So I'm excited. The other piece that Dr. Larsson brings to the table is, she's worked in inner-city Chicago, and that's where she's done a lot of her research in the schools, being a teacher. And so she's also going to have opportunities to go out into our buildings and observe, you know, teachers responding and helping to support and mentor and coach. So it's a full package, and we're hoping that this will bring light some, some skills and strategies that we can use.
Each Principal received one of these books, right?
Each, each Principal received one of those books, right?
I know, chapters one, two, and 10.
One, two, and 10, this last time, that's kind of the introduction into the why, and then I forget what our assignment is for next time. And so then each time, we're just taking a different look at it, so. And as you can see, this is built for Principals to lead and coach others. Yeah.
So thank you.
You're welcome.
So while doing that, I mean, this work educating students, and the large majority of them are in challenging situations, it, it, it calls for a different, a, a, a different framework. And so while we are educating ourselves, educating administrators, educating our teachers, we, 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 we need the support from the community, and, and Elite is an example. And the interesting thing about Elite is, that is not shoved down from central office. The administrators, the Principals are self-selecting, and they're identifying the support, and they're using their own funds, their own title grant dollars to, 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 to defray those costs. And that's one thing I did when I came in, we were, Elite was on the Ed Fund rolls, and we said, hey, if you really want it, then you're going to have to pay for it with your, with your, you know, with your own school dollars. And what the board just approved tonight, for example, Sterling, that addendum, the Principal requested it, and she's using her title dollars to, to, to pay for that additional service, to assist them with, with the, with the culture and climate and the procedures and, and all of those things. And, I mean, they're being creative to, to ensure that students learn and, and, and those, those scores go up.
It's not a one-size-fits-all, right? It's not a one-size-fits-all. So Elite may not be for all schools, but it is for some schools, just like Family Core and Children's Family Therapies. Each billing is determined, what areas that they need support.
Each Principal receive one of these books?
Each Principal receive one of those books, right?
I know, chapters one, two, and 10.
One, two, and 10. This is the last time. That's kind of the introduction into the why, and then I forget what our assignment is for next time. And so then each time, we're just taking a different look at it. So, and as you can see, this is built for Principals to lead and coach others.
So thank you. So while doing that, I mean, this work educating students, and the large majority of them are in challenging situations, it calls for a different, a different framework. And so while we are educating ourselves, educating administrators, educating our teachers, we, we, we need the support from the community. And Elite is an example. And the interesting thing about Elite is that is not shoved down from central office. The administrators, the Principals are self-selecting, and they're identifying the support, and they're using their own funds, their own title grant dollars to, 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 to defray those costs. And that's one thing I did when I came in. We were, Elite was on the Ed Fund rolls, and we said, hey, if you really wanted, then you're going to have to pay for it with your, you know, with your own school dollars. And what the board just approved tonight, for example, Sterling, that addendum, the Principal requested it, and she's using her title dollars to pay for that additional service, to assist them with, with the, with the culture and climate and the procedures and all of those things. And, I mean, they're being creative to ensure that students learn, and, and those scores go up.
It's not a one-size-fits-all, right? It's not a one-size-fits-all. So Elite may not be for all schools, but it is for some schools, just like Family Core and Children's Family Therapists. Each building is determined what areas that they need support. And so we have a variety of options, and it's nice when Principals are able to work with their teachers and help support each other and get some additional resources to support them.
And I'll just, just to say that I will keep the board informed about some, some things that we're working on, because we're going to need a lot more supports around social-emotional and additional support for the whole child. And there are a couple of things that we're looking at. And I'll, we're still in the discussion phase, but I'm anticipating, hopefully, second semester, definitely for the 18, 19 school year, with a nice, bold plan to provide some wraparound community service for, for students. That's, that's a piece that's need to develop in the district.
Good. Thank you. Any other comments or any questions of anyone regarding this? What were the chapters? Two?
One, two. One, two, and 10.
One, two, and 10. So perhaps maybe, maybe we could read one, two, and 10 by next board meeting. That's not an assignment.
We do have the handouts, right? There's some amazing handouts we can share with Daphne, and Daphne can share it with you.
Dr. Lyman is very talented. She was one of my instructors at Bradley, and she's always believed in, in, you know, researching what make people tick, really, what make them work, you know? So we have, we have her back, yeah. Is, are there any reports from board committees? Mr. Walther?
Building Committee, I think there was a mention of it, but APSCO is making a presentation at the stadium on the 12th at 6:00. We're going to be meeting there, and I encourage any board members that they wanted to keep up on what we're doing with the Building Committee in the stadium. That would be a good place. These kids are remarkable. I know you've seen them, but they amaze me more every day. So we're going, they're going to be, they're going to be doing an update. We're just going to be observers, too, of what's going on with that. Building Committee meeting has been changed. We're meeting on the 25th. Daphne, are we back at 9:00?
It is.
No. October 25th.
Right.
At 9:00 a.m.
9:00 a.m. So Building Committee is the 25th at 9:00 a.m. Thanks, Daphne.
Thank you.
Yes, the Policy Committee will meet on Wednesday, October 18th, at 9:30 a.m.
Building, or not Building, Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee is currently deliberating November 2nd versus November 9th. I'm leaning 9th. How's that?
I am, too.
Okay. Let's set that.
So in keeping with trying to keep the meetings at a decent hour, I promised Ms. Douglas that she could go in, study for her, what is it? You have a final?
A midterm.
A midterm. Yes, a midterm. But in, in keeping with that, we have just finished our agenda.
Wait a minute, can I?
You have a committee? I mean, go ahead.
Just a very, I want to correct the record. Dr. Damealon Karat hinted that all of the Elite funds were covered by title funds that were chosen by Principals, and that is not completely accurate. The contract is for $61,000 by title funds. There's an additional, almost $10,000 that comes from our education fund. So it's not just that. The other thing, in order to be completely accurate, Dr. Damealon Karat, you said, we need Elite, quote, "scores go up," unquote. You have no data for that. None. And so in order to be honest with everyone, let's hold ourselves accountable to the standards that perhaps we hold our Principals and the scientists in this book accountable. We look for data, and we look for honest outcomes.
So the, the consent, the consent agenda, it talks about bringing Elite in to provide, to assist with providing a positive climate and assist with behavior strategies so that student achievement can increase. So that's how it's written. Okay? I mean, that's, and is Carla here? No, she's on vacation today.
It reads, Mr. Walther?
I beg your pardon. Mr. Walther read directly. It reads, quote, "designed to create and maintain a positive school culture that is designed to create, to increase student achievement through behavior supports." That's what we have been looking for. Until we see it, I don't understand why we're spending on it.
Okay. Any other comments or, okay, I'm in change of motion.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.